Whenever you're ready.
All right, good morning, everyone. We'll start the board meeting with the joining of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Start out with public comment period. Senator Lang is here and Representative Verdahl.
I don't know if you want to come up at the same time. Well, good morning. You can hold hands.
Sure.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and council members. My name is Andrew Lang. I am the, well, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity just to talk to you a little bit as a, as a public member instead of an official capacity right now. But I am the senator in your next door district, Candy Ohio County, Swift County, Chippewa, and Reddell, excuse me, House. But after redistricting, the western half, the western one-third of Meeker County.
What do you say, half?
Half. Anything west of pretty much Highway twenty-two will be in the district that I'm on, seating elections. So in an effort just to introduce myself and say hello and give you a little information about what I do, I'm here for you this morning. I currently in the Senate, I sit on both the environment finance, the environment policy, ag finance, ag policy. I'm the chairman of the Veterans Committee in the Senate. And then on a year-round basis, I also sit on the State Emergency Medical Services Regulatory Board that regulates EMS services. And then I sit on the SARS-SM's Outdoor Heritage Council, which is a, really, it's the outdoor heritage to restore, enhance, protect some of the natural resources of the state. We spend about a third of the legacy dollars that were borrowed on two thousand eight, ends up being about three hundred fifty million dollars. So it's a, a pretty busy job year-round. When I first got elected, they told me it was part-time. But on, on the civilian side, I work for Northland Royal Air Care on the Reddell Falls, and I am still a member of the Minnesota Army National Guard for a few more years. So I've gone past my twenty now, so we'll see how long they hang on to me. With that being said, I guess I don't have anything specific that I'd like to say other than maybe answer a few questions. Like I said, introduce myself. I grew up in Candy Ohio, just to the west here, so I have pounded the mean streets of Litchfield a little bit in the past when I was in my younger years. But, and yeah, Candy Ohio, graduated from Wilmer High School a little over twenty-five years ago. Yeah, I know, it's gone fast. Otherwise, yeah, if there's any questions anybody would like to ask, anything about the Senate in particular, about the district, how it's really been changing. Meeker County actually has the, I don't know if there's any other counties in the state of Minnesota that have the distinct pleasure of having three different senators running for election in the same county, but that's what's going on now. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a weird thing when we go to the Meeker County.
The cross we have to bear.
Yeah, it's a cross we have to bear. Yeah, it's, the Meeker County Fair has three different senators, so it's confusing as all get out. Yeah, it's, you know, I hope all of you got the letter we sent out this spring just to say hi and my, my card and my cellphone number. If not, let me know and I can, I can hand out cards and cellphone numbers and have all my contact information, so they should be available. So yeah, with that, just thanks for the five minutes and if you have any questions of me.
Andrew, just for clarification, District sixteen.
Sixteen, yes, that's correct. So I went from District seventeen to District sixteen, but I never moved. And the, the district, just for some, it was about eighty thousand residents from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty. Now it's about eighty-seven thousand, so we gained about seven thousand residents. Lost Swift County as a whole, picked up the, the western half of Meeker County. So, and Dean, I, I think, I don't know if there's anybody else that went west in this redistricting, but Dean is going to be running to the west of where he was in the past. So, I don't know, that's, that's kind of my, my two-minute spiel. I don't know if anybody, like I said, I sit on ag and environment committees rather have, rather heavily. I do sit on the transportation committee. That's, did I say that? I don't think I did say that the first time.
On transportation.
Yeah, I sit on transportation, which is a lot of work as well. So in the Senate, we have, or at least I have had, I've been a freshman, they always call this when you're new. And I had a freshman load all the way into my sophomore year, so I don't know how that happened. But yeah, my class load or my committee load has been rather large, so I'm going to be looking to filter that down a little bit and have a little more free time.
On the Senate side, is there still expected a significant turnover come November?
So, we are, between Republicans and Democrats, we have twenty-two seats of the sixty-seven seats that will be retirees or be redistricted and chose not to rerun, rerun for elections. So it's a significant change in the Senate. Whether it wins or draw, whoever wins these elections is going to be a significant difference on the floor. Minimum twenty-two, I should say that. It might bump ups at the Senate. It'll, it'll be an interesting year.
We've got seven, eight House members running for the Senate. We like to say we're sending our best and our brightest.
I have a comment for that guy. I just let it go.
So yeah, I, I, any, any other questions, I, I'm more than willing to, any other council members. Be quiet. Hopefully, see you soon.
All right, thank you. Always good to be here. I don't think I have to introduce myself too much to you guys since I've been doing this for twenty years. But my, my district, as the senator said, changed. I go west. I used to border the metro area when I had Wright County townships, and now I can almost see South Dakota, the end of my district. I have the, you know, half of Meeker, I've got the Lake Lilian corner of Candy Ohio, and then all of Reddell and all of Chippewa. So Mylan, Montevideo, that's all in, in my district now. I serve on capital investment, that's the bonding committee, legacy and education policy. I'll continue my fight for civics education in the next session of the legislature. Bonding, that's where I am, the Republican lead, and if things go the way we hope, I'll be the, the chair of the committee in the next biennium. We are still looking at trying to get some things done with bonding. In the bill that we just almost did, as the, as the Republican lead, I put into that bill more money for local roads and bridges than ever before in the state history. More money for Public Facilities Authority, the water projects, and it's never been done before. Local projects like, well, the, well, we did pass five million to the Litchfield Wellness Center. I had some more funding in there for that. We had five million for the renovation of the historic buildings downtown. Money for C-CAP for other cities in Meeker County and Litchfield, helping with the funding for that. Ten million dollars for the enhancement of Litchfield's wastewater treatment plant, dealing with the demands of increased demand in First District. So there are a lot of important things that have been done in bonding for this area and need to be done, could yet be done. Who knows? After the election, we may come back for a special session. You know, it's, it's a possibility. I don't, I wouldn't bet a whole lot on it, but that could happen. And if it does, the things that I just outlined for you likely will happen. If not now, then the next session. So that's, you know, what I've been doing, what I'm planning on doing in, in a, you know, basically a thumbnail sketch of it. So any, any questions or anything?
Representative Verdahl, next year normally is not a bonding year, correct?
Right.
So do you think there's a possibility that this is going to come up next year so that some of these items can move?
Yeah, that's, yes, and that's the silver lining for you and me.
Well, I'll jump in. I'll say the silver lining is that we want to get a bonding bill that early in session. I always say that, but this time it's, it's teed up to happen that way. Depending on how the election goes, exactly what the way that bonding bill looks, the reasoning.
Silver lining for me is that if it happens, we, because we didn't do one this biennium. Usually we do two the next biennium. When I, last time, when I was chair, we didn't do a bonding bill in two thousand sixteen. So when I, when I became chair in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, we did major bonding bills each year. And so if we don't get one done yet this year, and again, things go the way I kind of think and hope they will, you'll have me as the chair of the bonding committee for two bonded bills in a row.
That's a big deal for western Minnesota.
Yes.
That's really inside baseball, but it doesn't make it any less true. And actually, the bonding bill that, that came on, even the one that came off the floor this, well, sat on the floor of the Senate.
It was, it was good.
Pretty good.
And, you know, for those that, you know, maybe don't have a full understanding, the reason that we, we bond is for the public buildings, the public property of the state of Minnesota. It is our responsibility as a legislature to take care of the property that the state of Minnesota owns. And frankly, also to help to keep down local property taxes. Because if a new water tower is needed, if a new wastewater treatment plant is needed, if the state didn't bond to do it, then the local taxpayers would have to pay for it. And so they still do, and we usually require a fifty percent match. So there is that buy-in from the locals as well. But without it, without bonding, without taking care of what we own as the state of Minnesota, it would be much more expensive for the local people.
Gentlemen, I have one question. Well, Representative Verdahl, you're sixteen A to your new district.
I am sixteen A, yes.
Sixteen A for reference. And then for both of you, I sit on the vice chair of Public Safety Policy Committee. And we just had our district meeting, fall, our fall conference last week in Alexandria. And when you sit in that room and you ask everybody in the room, who needs deputies, corrections officers, and dispatchers, you know, eighty hands go up and there's only forty people in the room because everybody's that short. And all we're doing is cannibalizing from one another. And the sheriff sits here and, you know, needs positions and can't find them, and, and it also lowers the quality of those positions. What is, what, is there anything that you're seeing in the state or who do we need to talk to at state level to try and change the dynamic that we have facing us? Because it's, nobody has an answer. And then committee meetings, you know, you got thirty people going through training or you had a hundred and fifty three, four years ago. And this is a significant problem to every county.
There's a couple, there's a couple of things, and this is a problem that goes through all the state of Minnesota. Like the State Patrol right now, I think in their graduating classes, like seventeen short of even fulfilling a graduating class, which is unheard of. State Patrol always had to cut their classes about in half to get them all graduated. Same thing goes, you know, from Wilmer P D in the past. I talked to Jim Felton, you know, we used to have a hundred applicants for two jobs. Now we get ten, maybe. So we, we did have a bill that was called COPS, of course. It was an acronym for something I didn't remember. But, you know, it wasn't very, wasn't exactly the most difficult acronym out there. But what it did, it was talking about recruiting and retention, you know, picking up some of the, those kids coming out of high school when it comes to, hey, if you go into law enforcement, you're going to pay for some of your tuition, some of that skills training that goes on, maybe supply some sort of stipend while you go, to make it a little easier to become a police officer. Also including in that was some of the, if you've ever known what the transition program is, when you're a person who has a four-year degree and you want to become a law enforcement officer, that particular program has looked at with a little bit of scrutiny since the Muhammad Neuer case, because that was a program he went through. But overall, I think it's fairly successful when you have an educated person that was going to go through the, the program. It goes through a, a high-intensity, one semester program for all the law enforcement. I think it's twenty-two, twenty-three classes, pretty extensive. And then they go into skills and then they go into law enforcement. Then we talk about retention of some of the senior officers, right? Some of those guys that are mid-fifties and have the most experience are thinking, I'm, I'm done with this. I'm tapping out. Like, what is it going to take for us to keep you around? That bill addressed a lot of that, I think, like increasing retirement at a pretty rapid rate at fifty-five-plus years old. Looking at some additional 401K matching and things like that that really makes it worthwhile to stick out another five years senior, you know, when you're a senior officer. But truthfully, you gotta address the elephant in the room, right? Like law enforcement has taken such a beating, you know, realistically, on a, well, on every platform, let's just say. Definitely undeserved. And I, I think that's going to take some time for recovery. I think it's going to take some time for those high school kids, those college kids to really, you know, move back into law enforcement career and say, hey, these are some of our best and brightest. How do we, how do we get to do that? So we've taken steps. I think society needs to take a step now, hopefully. I don't know. That's a really big question.
The Senator covered a lot of the issues there, attraction, retention, just making the job more attractive. I mean, it's getting a lot of black eyes right now. I did have a bill that I worked on with Sheriff Cruz, relatively small budget item, but still bothersome to them. That is the cost of extradition, where local law enforcement has to go into other states and bring people back. And the cost is borne then by the sheriff department, the sheriff's department, their budget. And I did have a bill that went through the House, and we had the Senate, too. It should have happened. But at the end of the line, the chair of the, of the House Committee was trying to hold it up for some trade bait for something else. Well, I think it would have happened. I think that it would have passed, that the state would have covered part of this cost. But it didn't, for the same reason that almost everything didn't happen at the end of last session. But I will say that if the chair of the committee is Brian Johnson, instead of Carlos Mariani, there'll be a different attitude towards some of these things. And no matter who has control of legislature, Carlos Mariani is retired, so he won't be there.
All right. Sheriff, do you have anything to add? I mean, this is, this is the tough stuff that we're dealing with out here, so.
Well.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Senator Lang, if you do have a contact information.
Yeah, yeah. I, actually, let me just write it down. I, I sent letters out, but.
I never.
You forgot one?
I don't recall it.
I don't, I don't recall either.
We will resend, otherwise.
I also have a copy of his contact information I can send out to the whole board as well.
There you go.
That's all I have now anymore. We don't, anymore I have landlines. My parents got rid of theirs.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, moving along. Item B, September twenty twenty-two board meeting agenda.
No additions. No additions.
No changes.
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein. Any discussion?
Did we ask if there were other people who had public comment?
You know what? I don't.
No.
I was too long-winded.
Do we have?
Is there anybody else for public comment?
No, nobody else. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
I didn't notice anybody else.
Good catch. Any other discussion on the agenda? If not, here none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item, consent agenda. Andrew, if you walk us through that. And this is, we do have a resolution here, so this will be a roll call.
Yep, we have approval of the September sixth board meeting minutes, approval of social services, county and hospital accounts payable, approval of hire full-time dispatcher Amber Heine, Level B twenty-two, Step One, twenty-nine-four, an hour effective September twenty-sixth, approval of temporary liquor license for the American Legion for October fifteenth at the fairgrounds, approval of the hire of full-time building official Brian Farrenbach, Level C forty-five, Step Nine, and forty-two, twenty-two, an hour effective October third, approval of hire casual part-time public health nurse Eileen Nelson for CPR instruction to public health staff, approval to, of final acceptance of payment for the twenty-twenty-two pavement crack ceiling contract, approval of acceptance of payment for intersection lighting project SP zero forty-seven, zero seven, zero, zero, one, three, resolution twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, thirty-one, appointing Dr. Quinn Piper as the medical examiner and approval of agreement. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Are there any items on there anyone wishes to discuss?
I just found it amusing that we bought wooden nickels. Hundred and seventy-two dollars.
What in the world?
I know what it's for and where it was going, but it just kind of looked funny.
Yep, wooden nickels. I did have on the intersection lighting project. Now, that whole ball got rolling before some of us newbies got on the board. But since this was completed, I've had a number of people contact me and thank the board for putting up these various intersection lighting projects. So it's been very well received. People are appreciating it.
And that, they were appreciating it before you were a newbie, or two. So it's been, oh, it's been a popular.
Good, good comments on that.
All right, anything else in the consent agenda? If you're not, I'd have Cory take the roll, please.
We don't have a motion.
Nope.
Move to, Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Paul.
Second.
Second by Julie. Now, Cory.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradison.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Next item, Diane Winter, Public Health Director.
My name is Diane Winter from Public Health. Included in your board packet was a summary of a request to hire a full-time case manager. Public Health Case Manager, the current population for Prime West. And this particular request was also included and approved in the two thousand twenty-three budget. But what has happened since then, in addition to their caseloads increasing, we had a full-time nurse who functioned half-time family health and held a half-time case management caseload. She resigned effective last Friday, and there just is no capacity within that two-member team to, to take that additional caseload on. So I'm requesting to have that case manager hired now rather than waiting for the January, start of January year in the two thousand twenty-three budget. And this position is reimbursed through Prime West based on the category of the individual they're serving, either by capitation or fee for service.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Diane? Not, I'd look for a motion to approve for her to recruit.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bradison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Diane. Good luck. Good luck, too. Mikel Johnson, Human Resources.
Good morning. Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator, and here to seek approval of Humana as the county dental insurance carrier for two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. The dental is one hundred percent, the premium is a hundred percent paid for by the employee. And I was hearing from employees that they were hoping that we could look for dental that did not include the preventative care cost in the maximum benefit. So for instance, on our current carrier, if they go in for their cleanings and say they have a one thousand dollar maximum benefit, cleaning can be about two hundred dollars, so that would come out of that one thousand dollars. So I asked our, our ancillary benefit broker to go out for proposals. We received several proposals. And then we met with the Health Insurance Committee. And overall, the, the decision to, to recommend was Humana as their offering a twelve percent reduction in premiums and a two-year rate guarantee with that. They do not include the preventative care costs in the overall maximum benefit, so they would have that as a enhancement. They also provide three cleanings per year as compared to two. And they also, on the high plan, offer a thirty percent coinsurance. Once the annual benefit, annual maximum benefit has been met, they would still offer thirty percent coinsurance over that, which is pretty unheard of as far as what our ancillary broker said. So the one downside with Humana is that on the low plan, it does not cover basic oral surgery, which would be your basic extractions. So we would be losing that benefit on the low plan, so we would just encourage employees that if they have more dental needs, that they should seek the high plan. But overall, there would be a reduction, which is always really nice. And so the employees on the Health Insurance Committee recommend that we go with Humana.
And that was guaranteed for the two-year.
Yeah, when it was explained, I mean, it's, this is kind of a no-brainer. I mean, twelve percent decrease in a two-year lock, and all your Bennys are still there. I think it's good for the employees.
Okay. Any other questions?
Move to approve Humana as the county's dental insurance carrier for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand.
Motion by Paul.
Second.
Second by Danny. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Mikel. You want to?
You probably should do the public.
That's what I was going to ask if we jump. We're just about nine o'clock, so we'll probably jump up to item number seven on the agenda, public hearing to consider. Do we need a motion to recess County Board?
I typically, no.
Okay. Well, then, I'm going to recess County Board and we will convene as a county ditch authority. With that, we'll move to the public hearing to rescinding an order of judicial ditch seventeen.
So before we begin, we have connections with our two remote people.
I am working on it.
Don't sit there on.
I'm looking on it right now.
So joining us remotely for the judicial seventeen request to rescind will be Carrie Riven from Poser as well as Tom Landzel. We also have in the audience representing Candy Ohio County, Lauren Eggleby. We've been joining myself, I'll carry this. Steve is the judicial board chair, so it's unique that he's also the board chair today.
All right.
But Steve, I believe Danny is not part of this board.
Oh, okay.
We still have four of them, three.
You're on break.
Oh, I'm on break. All right. I'll take five, then.
Well, we did reach out to Mr. Anderson from Candy Ohio County, so he's aware. And Lauren is here to speak on behalf of Candy if we need it.
And a majority is needed, but not a supermajority, correct?
Yep, we should be ready to go.
All right, we will open the public hearing for joint ditch seventeen. John Condon, our representative, Mister Inge, in the Soil, Water and Conservation District and Bowser, provide an overview of what happened and why the change is being requested of the board's final order.
So Steve, Soil and Water is also here.
Yeah, I. I noticed that.
Which one of them is speaking?
I don't know if Tom or Terry would wanna speak, otherwise I could, it doesn't matter.
I'll let you guys organize the facts how you want them presented.
Go ahead, Terry.
That muted? Looks muted.
Somebody's muted.
She's not muted on this end.
Now you're us. Technical difficulties. Your break is getting longer.
Go and have some more bananas.
Yeah, maybe you can serve refreshments.
I don't know, hospitality is my thing.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thought you were strong.
Nah, probably you're way stronger.
That's what I thought, I could hear it real faint.
Terry, can you hear us? Terry, can you hear us? Sorry, we're still.
This is the first ditch I worked on after becoming a commissioner, or was that nineteen?
Oh, fifty-one was the big one that we, when we first came on. This, this one. Yeah.
I see it dates back to.
But the one you're thinking of was fifty-one, was a very like four days in.
Yeah.
To your job. Fifth of January.
And a high dollar one, as I recall.
Terry, can you try again?
But seventeen has been, work has been being done on that for quite, quite some time.
There's a couple different projects.
Yeah.
Terry, can you just try talking again real quick?
So Vice Chair Schmidt, how does it feel being Chair Olberg for the day?
Well, so far I only screwed up a couple times, forgot to ask for the bullet.
A couple comments I could make. Probably should refer.
I, I would think less if you don't.
Let it go.
If you can't get it to work, I can describe well enough what happened.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and we'll.
Then they can add any comments that discrepancies or whatever.
And before John starts on the agenda, I guess I didn't recognize more just mentioned, we do have to identify publicly that we did the notice requirements. So for both Meeker and Candy Ojai, every individual on this system was on file along with all of the parts that were involved, Bowser. And I failed to mention that Josh Palmeir is here from Soil and Water as well, so all the notices were done per requirements.
Right.
Did we, did we officially, it's Tom Lancel and Terry Reagan, heard the Bowser representatives that are on the line for the record, that will? John, I'll let you get started.
All right, there is finding an order granting request for Richard Hengen and Meeker County Soil and Water to modify a portion of Speaker Candy Ojai, J seventeen, that was approved October sixth, two thousand twenty. That included a new easement, it was proposed tile reroute for the Thompson project. So there was a new easement put on that reroute. And subs, and it was part of branch two. And while I was actually out there on site when they did this, when they exposed the tile, the tile ended up being approximately two feet lower than what they anticipated in their plans. So it was not gonna work for the products we're heard. So the reroute did not happen. We just basically patched up the tile and put it back up. So there was no, reroute never happened, nothing changed with the original tile. So why we're here today is to rescind that order granting the new easement. So we're getting at that easement and then we're stating the easement going back over the old line, essentially is what we're doing. I think that pretty well sums it up for Lauren.
So basically because of the difference in elevation, once the tile covered it, it forfeited that project because the the rest of the facts won't work. So we're just rescinding that.
The new easement that was acquired and then we're just putting the old easement back in place.
Okay. All right. Is there anything to add?
Mister Chair, I may add.
Lauren.
This is one very small portion of the total project, so this is, the, the rest of the project went off without a hitch and it, and it worked very, very well. So this is just one small portion of that large project. But it's a very nice project.
Okay, okay.
And then my comment at this point on the open floor, just answers questions. Hill also indicates, assuming the board approves the draft finding in order, which we're going to talk about here from their office, they will coordinate in preparing a release of the old easement and grant a new easement along the original alignment where the tile is currently installed. So this will restore the records to manageable points.
So this is a county tile that.
Correct.
I mean, just so we're unclear that this is a county tile, not a, a private tile.
Right, it's part of the judicial system.
Okay, all right. All right.
I see a number B that the Mister Inge will be responsible for all costs associated with this.
This particular project has been a billable project, we went along as Lauren commented, so this will be available in action until this is.
All right, is there any other questions? Julie or Paul? Anything? And do we know if Tom or Terry have anything to add or?
Were we able to capture them on the?
They can hear us.
Okay, they've been able to hear what? We can't hear them.
So they've sent no emails with questions or?
Nothing. Okay.
All right. So we would look. You need a few different motions on this one, correct?
Should open it for public comment as well.
Okay.
Follow the agenda there, I think that'll help these kind of.
Okay, all right, so there's nothing further to add, so we'll open the floor to public comments. And I, I think we have a landowner in the room, if he cared a public, would you like to make a public comment on it, or you're just here for?
I guess I don't understand where we're at. I just have a map that they sent me by date.
Lauren, I'll guide you.
What are we talking about? Which ditch? It was a tile line that was to be.
For the record, is he an adjacent landowner or just some of the ditch system?
Lauren, you wanna come up to the microphone with him?
Or hand them, or hand them.
John, which, which type, which number is it?
Now, this is a different project.
Yeah.
That's the Swanson project.
And I didn't. I didn't bring my map. Does you have any, any maps regarding this project?
No, I.
The, the tile was on whose property?
On Inge's property.
It was all, it was all on Inge's property.
Everything that was to be on was on Inge's property.
Sure.
Map of.
That's a different project.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't recognize them.
I'm just downstream, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, that tile's on the very upstream end of the entire ditch.
Yeah.
So Steve, I believe that Lauren and John could probably work with this individual outside of this republic hearing, being identified that it's outside of this hearing.
Sure.
Just shortly after.
Okay, all right.
And Mister Chair, just so you're aware, Terry did send a message over team saying that he didn't have any additional comments, no additional comments.
All right.
Mister Chairman, I, one quick comment, I think it's important to note that for all property owners or anybody who's listening or, or interested, is that this change in the project will not affect anyone's drainage benefits upstream or downstream. So this is a very simple yet necessary process that we need to go through. But it, it's important to know that it will not affect anyone's drainage, good or bad.
Yeah.
Got it. I appreciate that, Lauren. Uh, any other public comments? Hearing none? We'll close the public comment portion. And then will this board have any other questions?
I guess I have one, just because I'm still learning about all of these different ditch things. Why would Mister Inge be billed for this and not disperse those costs among all property owners like most of the world is?
Because it was a petition filed and petitions for like imballment, impairments or reroutes, stuff like that. All those expenses are incurred by land, not part of the.
The individual.
By the individual filed the petition.
I see, thank you.
Mister Chairman, Commissioner, I, the drainage law does say that a petitioner is responsible for, for costs associated to items in that petition. I do believe, and I hope that when Mister Inge is, receives this bill, that Bowser will have program dollars to help. I don't know that for sure, but.
You're correct.
Okay, good.
Yeah, he'll submit the invoices to Soil and Water District and then the district will turn to Bowser to reimburse Mister Inge.
Good, so that's program dollars. Also program dollars that paid for restoration, the construction and, and associated costs, so it's good to hear.
Thank you.
And Julie, for your information, costs to this point have been built and have been reimbursed. So these are new developments that we will be additional billing for.
Okay. Good.
So we will not need to continue this public hearing.
I don't believe no issues have developed, I think we will pass six.
Okay. Uh, at that point, then I would look for the board. We can approve the draft findings and order granting request to rescind October sixth, twenty twenty drainage system ordered by motion and roll call vote.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bredesen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. And that will be roll call vote.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Nope.
No.
He's a, he's a special.
Oh, sorry.
List. You're still on vacation.
Yeah, I know.
It's just the three.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner John, do you wanna take the role then?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson is noted to be absent from Candy Ojai. Commissioner Olberg from Meeker noted to be absent. Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. And our next item would be the board to acknowledge the previous minute, uh, meeting minutes from December third, twenty nineteen, December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, April eighth, twenty twenty-one, June eighth, twenty twenty-one, and August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved, Mister Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. This can just be a majority vote.
That's correct. The reason that we're bringing all these minutes is because when we have official meetings of a drainage authority, we are to take minutes out that, that's outside of the county board, we're using that time slot. And these minutes had not been officially acknowledged by the judicial board. And so I'm bringing that standard up to the meeting up today. So yes, it's just a fair vote.
Well, and that would also tie all this rescission.
Exactly.
To those minutes, so it's easy to track history that way. And we have, we'll take the vote. All in favor of acknowledging the previous minutes as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Is there anything further?
Not for the joint board.
For the joint board?
We do, now that you are still in recess, I would assume from the county board, do you wanna continue ditch items or go back to?
Yes, we will.
So I think with the closing of this issue in JV seventeen, we'll make sure that we work with landowner that was here so that he has his questions answered. But in the ditch authority, John would have the first item on the.
Do we need to, do I need a motion to close?
Whole seventeen, yes.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn joint ditch seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bredesen, second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Joint ditch seventeen is adjourned. We'll now continue with county ditch items on the agenda. John?
All right, the first item I bring to you this morning is approval for vote for purchase of some culverts for some crossing repairs on county ditch fifteen. There's multiple crossings that are in need to repair. We've been through a lot of the meetings already, you guys are aware of a lot of that stuff. There was one landowner requesting that two of the crossings be repaired as possible. He's got two different properties that are landlocked. He currently worked, he has permission from his neighbor to get into his fields, but he has to work around his neighbors like planting, harvest, all that schedules like this year. With the tough spring, he never got in and planted any of those. And being we got Joe's repair report, we had no recommendations in his elevations and all that. So I started the process of doing that. I got a quote for two culverts. I've also reviewed this already with the DNR being that it does affect a protected waterway basin. Regarding Joe's recommendation, they already agreed with that, so we're good to go on that part of it. But I did get a quote from Two North Steel for two sixteen-inch culverts that are thirty-two feet long. The cost for those two culverts was thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars, eighty-eight cents, that's including delivery of the culverts. That's eight bit pricing on those. Installation of these culverts to be done by MSB excavating, work would be. Installation of these culverts to be done by MSB excavating, work would be completed, time and materials. My approximate, uh, estimation of about sixty-eight thousand dollars per having them installed. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the two culverts.
Can you get them, John? I mean, are they available? Or is this one of these things that's going to get caught up in the supply side of things?
The sooner we get an order, the better chance we have of getting them. Who knows how long it'll take?
But if we approve this, that will lock in the price with them?
Yeah.
The, um, so these are additional crossings.
These would be ones that would be repaired either way. On the repair, you know, like Joe's got in the repair report, these are two crossings that would be repaired either way. Um, so they're currently there, one's completely washed out and the other one, I would even question taking my side by side across it, in that kind of condition.
Okay, so they are, I mean, I just, anytime, I mean, this is my layman's terms, anytime you add pipe in the ditch, I'm just looking at additional, if we're moving and relocating to make it work better for landowners, I got no...
No, or putting them in the same location.
Okay.
Completely out of repair.
Okay.
For use anyway.
Alright. Julie, do you have any concerns?
Yeah.
You're back off break.
Yeah. I was waiting for the nod. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the quote from True North Steel for two sixty inch by thirty-two feet long steel culverts in amount of thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Motion by Dan.
I will second that one.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, John, Barb?
Along with county ditch fifteen, remember that you have that from the hearing on Tuesday, next Tuesday, it's likely will be part of, uh, John's presentation with the entire group in Vassal. Okay, then moving on to the next item that I have for the ditch authority, and that is to consider, uh, loan requests. We do have, um, funds again being requested both direction, paying back loans and ordering more loans. So, the mid-year assessments did certify, uh, county ditch seventeen and nineteen, we weren't able to do that, um, at the beginning of the year, but repayments have now allowed me to, uh, retire portions of those loans, so county ditch seventeen, thirty-five thousand plus interest, county ditch nineteen, twenty thousand plus interest. Recent work on county, uh, joint ditch number one makes it necessary for us to obtain a loan in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We will be paying one of the bills today, which is fifty-eight thousand, and the other one will likely be on the next, uh, meeting for October, which is about sixty thousand, so that fund can't, um, obviously handle that.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand, oh, it's got up to about a month, but anyway, um, that particular ditch, once we go through the, um, percentages and sharing our bills and doing the certification, the end result is that Meeker County will only be ten point seventy-seven percent. Candy Ojai will be, um, the larger portion of the remain, and there's a very small amount that will go to, uh, Ranville County when we do the billing. So, I expect this loan to be short term on this particular one. We did have the loans previously at three percent, and I'm requesting that this loan be considered at three percent also. So, with that, we have two, uh, motions, one is to make the repayment, two, revenue from ditch, and that will be for the two that were retiring seventeen and nineteen, and then also a second motion to authorize the new loan and authorize that at the suggested three percent interest.
Do we take these individually?
I think we should so that the identification is clear.
Alright.
I move to approve transferring funds from ditch to revenue to retire loans for fifty-five thousand plus interest for ditches seventeen and nineteen.
Motion by Commissioner Bredesen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shieferbine. Any further discussion on the loans? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Get on a roll, Julie.
Yep, here we go. Move to approve ditch loan from revenue fund for ditch, joint ditch number one of a hundred and sixty thousand at three percent interest.
Motion, Commissioner Bredesen.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Shieferbine. Any further discussion or questions on the loan? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, thank you, and we will adjourn the county ditch authority and reconvene the county board. Next item up is, item on, uh, Dana Burmeister, Field Service Manager, South. Alright, oh, here they, here we go. Sure, looks great. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Dana Burmeister, I'm a regional manager for the Department of Corrections, and I supervise eight districts in the southern half of the state. Um, and I appreciate you letting us be flexible with the schedule, um, I wanted to get my new Chastor district supervisor on board, and so I'd like to introduce you to Sean McMonigal, um, he just started in August, and he will be supervising Mary Jean. So, that's why we wanted him to be here on board for this presentation.
Well, thank you guys for having us.
Yep. Um, so I think, oh, go ahead. And Mary Jean, I think you know everyone. I made sure, I'm like, do they all know you? Yes. So, do you all have a copy of the data that we had, um, printed out for you? Okay, so I just want to, um, draw some attention to some of the points. It was important to, um, be able to provide since the beginning of the contract, but then to give that historical perspective before COVID, um, because we know that that has greatly impacted, uh, many of our STS programs. So, um, just to highlight, um, the average crew size that is listed here in this graph about midpoint down does not include Mary Jean's hours, those are only, and this is in the top. The top graph about, it's with the blue categories there, yep, average crew size. Those do not include Mary Jean's hours, um, however, the total hours worked at the very bottom of that graph does include Mary Jean's hours. So, um, just to draw attention to that, um, also, the market value, estimated market value is what we ask the crew leaders to give a projection of what that work would cost if it were to be hired out or completed by someone else, uh, you know, a county employee or, you know, uh, the county had to hire it done, and so this is something that I have talked with Mary Jean about because I think she's providing some very low um, estimates with her work, um. So, what we talked about is if it's an actual project where you have a start and an end date, and it's not something that is reoccurring, um, that you do on a regular basis, call a person that does that type of work and get an actual bid, so it's something that we can have an actual estimate of what it would cost, and then it's virtually, you know, free to the county. Projects that are ongoing, such as the lawnmower and so on, that can be a bid from the county on what it would cost the county if they were to have to hire a worker. Um, and I think, what did you say, you, um, do like twenty dollars an hour or something normally?
That's when I work for, uh, for city entities. We should adjust that too as well, I mean, that's kind of...
So, I think, what I'm trying to say is those are pretty lean estimates of the work that is completed by STS. Um, the middle, um, graph shows the total hours worked, um, from the beginning of our fiscal year twenty through today. Um, and with this one, I will just point out quarter three, um, fiscal year twenty-two has lower, um, total hours worked, and that is because Mary Jean was out for a period of time for medical issues. So, I just want to, that's kind of a, um, exception right there. And then, the bottom graph with the average crew size, um, I've noted some of the, um, issues that we were forced to, um, you know, restrictions that we were able, or were forced to place on the crews during COVID. Um, and so those began right away in March of twenty twenty, um, and we actually suspended crews for those three months. All of our crew leaders continued to work, but they worked independently, and so, you know, that obviously impacted the, um, crew sizes. Um, and then, just in the beginning of March of twenty-two is when we finally resumed normal operations, um, raising the limit that we could, um, transport in our vans from two to however many we can get on crew these days, so, that's what I have for you on there, um.
Chair, if I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, just I think an important piece that was unique to Meeker County is I remember reviewing, um, during COVID, we authorized, I think, um, the previous county administrator authorized that we have individuals working over at the landfill during that time, and so I think we were unique in that we actually did have crews working, but they were independent over at the landfill. So, those numbers should be included in here as well.
Yes.
We did have workers during COVID.
And we did allow, if, um, clients had their own transportation, they could meet at a work site where we were able to social distance, but, um, we only allowed up to two to be transported in the vans and, you know, had to space them and had barriers and that kind of thing, and... So, yeah, that definitely impacted it, um, with the breakdown of the hours where Mary Jean works at, in that top graph again, um, because the county pays seventy-five percent of the, um, program, seventy-five percent of the hours should be done for the county, and I think that you can see that, that I believe has been met, um, maybe not in the month that, or the quarter she was gone, but most of the other ones, I would say they're, she's, she's met or exceeded that percentage, so... And, um, you know, you can see, since the crews resumed, we are seeing a bit of an upswing in the average crew size, but that is absolutely something that we do need to discuss. Um, I'm going to be visiting with Les and, um, hopefully some of the agents, and it, it just comes down to the referrals. We need the referrals from the agents, we need the judge to be ordering STS, STS can be a consequence in and of itself, it can be done in lieu of fines, it can be done in lieu of jail, but we need the referrals. The agents can do it, um, as a sanction to correct behavior, they can recommend it in probation violation, and they can also recommend it as part of PSI. So, that's something that we're gonna hopefully be working on. Questions?
How do we get participants to, to want to have these folks come and, and work their hours? I know we have cooperation with the, um, like the food shelf and some of those places. How, do those folks come to us, or do you reach out to them?
Oh, well, I knew you were talking about how do we get work sites?
Sure.
Um, actually, people, they'll usually contact me, and then we can set something up, like, for their, their need, you know, if they need... Like, if they're gonna have a change over the Threads of Hope, they'll say, could you have a crew come on, you know, this date and this date? But I mean, I, it's, I'm open if they just call me and we try to accommodate what they need. I don't go and, I don't go search out, but I make myself available in case they might need, they don't know I'm a resource, then I kind of, I do kind of extend that way too, I'll be honest with you all, saying, well, you know, this is something that my program could help you with. Thank you.
And work for any, we'll do work for any nonprofit, city, county, municipality type, um, townships, um, and, and we do have crew leaders that do seek out, you know, if, if work sites are slow or whatever, they'll go look for work, most of the time, the crew leaders have pretty well-established work sites, um, the counties alone generally, I mean, when the fair comes to town, and, I mean, they generally are pretty, um, busy with those kinds of things, but, um, we absolutely will look for work if, if, you know, people, um, are needing our help. Um, on our Department of Corrections website, we do have a place that people can put in for, if they have an STS project, where they want to see if it's appropriate, um, and I monitor those, I, I actually monitor the STS program for the state, so we have twenty-six crews right now that run statewide. And so, when those come in, I look at them, and if they're appropriate, if they're one of our crews, I'll send it to the crew leader, and if they're not one of our crews, and they have a county, um, program running, I'll send it to that county and let them know about it, so...
Thank you.
Uh, question, I, one clarification, do we, is this all adults, or is there juvenile part of this too? It is as well, okay. Um, we just had our Public Safety Committee meeting up in Alex last week, and, oh, this was, topic was talked about a lot. Uh, Minnesota ranks fiftieth in community supervision. Nationally, the average is five percent of, of dollars that goes into community supervision, Minnesota puts about two and a half percent. With that, we have the highest offense rate, or fifth highest in the nation. And sixty percent of crime is done by recidivism. Is that, would you agree with that? County attorney, I mean, uh, Andrew sent out a, a graphic a couple, ten days ago or so on the cost of this program to the county outside of Mary Jean's wage of about twenty-five thousand dollars, is that accurate?
The cost, what we've budgeted for the cost of this program is eighty thousand dollars for next year.
Yes.
Yes.
But that includes
Yeah, that Mary Jean.
Mary Jean. And that, and that. And I guess what, everything, and everything, and one other graphic that they had last week, one juvenile who gets in the, in the hot water, I will say, in nineteen ninety-eight taxpayer dollars, one juvenile caught, has an estimated cost of one point four million dollars in taxpayer cost, if they don't get straightened out. So, this is a, to me, I mean, I know this, uh, the numbers have been down, and, and I, but everything that the state is looking to do to through public safety directs more this way versus incarceration, and I think right now the missing piece is the connection between the judges and how mandatory or how, you know, that's affecting Mary Jean's numbers on her work crews, and, but it, it seems to me, everything I'm hearing and seeing is that that is going to change in the future because of the data that's being brought forth. Um, because they don't like to incarcerate as much as they possibly can, they want to get into that, um, to rehabilitation and catching them early on and trying to get them on a straightforward path. So, I mean, to me, it's hard for me to, to, uh, argue against this program.
Whose responsibility is it to help publicize this to our judges? Is it our attorneys? Is it your responsibility? Who, who tells them these numbers and says, here's an alternative option when you're giving out a sentence?
I, I, it does fall to us, I believe, um, but it's also, I mean, public defenders and county attorneys can, you know, mind and, and
Sure.
make that part of plea agreements or whatever, um, like I said, if it's in lieu of jail, um, it's a great alternative. Um, you know, for people that aren't employed, it teaches them at least that work ethic, you gotta get up, you gotta get to the van on time, you gotta be there on the days that you're supposed to report, um, you know, so at least we're teaching them something. You know, for those that are working, Mary Jean does a lot of independent placement so that we are not interfering with their work. We don't want them to lose jobs because they have to complete STS. Um, but for the juveniles, same thing, you know, it's teaching them something, getting along with adults and having to work with people in the community, so...
This, this will be emphasized with our judges now going forward.
Yeah, do you have, uh, Corrections Advisory Board?
No, we don't at this time.
Here? Okay.
And it, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong here because I'm still learning, because not every county is a DOC county.
Correct.
DOC counties, we have county probation, uh, counties that are, use a county probation, and then the other one is CCA, which is Community Corrections. So, there's three different... So there's three different programs. And I think that is part of the challenge is the messaging, how each program is funded. That's part of the problem with funding them and that's probably why we're dead last nation. But it's, and they're trying to address all that and, and to bring this together, where if a legislature, if the legislature can't understand it, you're not getting out. I mean, it's that simple. If they don't understand the language, they're not gonna stick their neck out to wood on something or promote something that they don't understand. So that's where the dollars fall short. But I think the other caveat we have is the three programs and trying to identify to, to the legislature, these three programs, they're all work a little bit differently. I'm, I'm sure there's, you know, arguments for and against of each one's strengths and weaknesses. But I think it's, you know, trying to get that messaging. And, and I don't know from a county attorney's standpoint, with the judges, you know, there's always, you got the judicial branch and the legislative branch and, and trying to make that communication between Sheriff's Association and County Attorneys Association and, and county supervision, you know, and, and making these arguments and get them all together in one page. And actually, that's that one work group that I'm sitting on is exactly that. We have DOC, Jake McClellan's in there and County Probation and, and Community Corrections and, and the two commissioners from, there's like 20 of us in there. And that's one of our topics is to bring this together and get it to the legislator in a pretty package that they can understand and get some funding behind because the dollars are not there for any of it. Doesn't matter what the program is, so. I'm not exactly sure how to communicate to the judges the importance of, of. But I think the argument is they want to keep people employed. George Sturgis too.
Yeah.
It was on Do Not Disturb.
So there, I mean, there's some communication gaps, but they're trying to address that.
Because I'm wondering if every time a, a judge has an opportunity to set down a sentence on someone, let's say I get a speeding ticket, would I have that option? I don't want to pay it or I don't have the money to pay it. Can I participate in this? And I'm, I'm assuming that there are regulations, you can't probably have someone who did a violent act. They maybe need to be incarcerated, but other folks, is that an option for every, every person who goes through our legal system to participate in this?
So for, STS can be done in lieu of fines. I will say that it kind of depends on how the court administrator's office works because I don't know how many years back, six years back or so, they started working with the collections agencies. And so if the client doesn't go, you know, directly to court admin and set up a payment plan or set a timeframe of when they're gonna pay it, they'll just send it to collections automatically. And once they do that, then we can't do STS for that fine. So that's one of the things that's really hurt our program. I mean, I don't think they did it intentionally, but that was the impact of it. And so, you know, that is one of the things that we, you know, tell people is visit with court admin right away. Let them know that you'd like to do STS instead or talk to the county attorney or your public defender and let them know that you don't have the money and you'd like to have that option. And so that is an option, but people have to be aware of it.
Yeah. The awareness piece is.
Yes.
Quick comment. My understanding in most of my discussions with the agencies, STS hours are recommended at the pre, pre PSI stage, as well as when we get to the point, judges are offering that as an option instead of fines, in lieu of fines. But my understanding is, is most of the defendants are choosing the fine and not the STS. And the reason for that is, I think, just simply, they, they see that as an easier option for them, right? I mean, if I don't pay the fine, it's gonna go to collections. I don't really want to get up in the morning and go do this work. So that's part of the problem, I think, when they're given the choice, they select a different choice than STS.
All right. Thank you. Will that always be the option too for the judges? Is that gonna be always what they're gonna do, either STS or fine? I mean, nothing's gonna change in terms of that?
So typically for the cases that I handle, I handle a higher level offenses and I will require that, as part of the plea agreement, that they do community work service. Community work service isn't necessarily STS. Community work service is, they need to go out and do community work service. They can work with ST, with the program, but that's not the requirement, is to do STS. But as far as the judge ordering fines or community work service, STS in lieu of the fines, they are often doing that. But I think another perspective we need to take a look at is maybe what the sheriff's seeing in the jail when inmates are coming down saying, I've been ordered to do STS or pay the fine, because he might have more insight on that.
And that was, that was coming around. Because one of the arguments or the, the problems, I will say that's been brought up and this is where the sheriff would come into it more, I think, is the lieu of the fine and then they don't show up for STS and they, they ain't got no money to pay the fine anyway. So they're kind of off the hook and they don't, and they don't want to tax the sheriff's department, that's a small offense, to go arrest that person and put them in jail. So there tends to be not a whole lot of teeth in that circle. Is, is that a fair assessment, Brian?
Well, so say they didn't pay the fine and there's a probation violation, there's a warrant. They're not held for any length of time to have teeth and they're gonna get up the next day. And it'll be, it's, that's the, that's the revolving door that's happening right now is there really isn't hard sanctions for not complying with a lot of stuff that the courts are doing.
And that's what, that's what I was hearing through this.
Okay, I just want to say something, just to clarify something. Brandy, when you mentioned that you, community work service and STS, I, a while back, I, I remember it being that, like Tammy Thompson was saying, because the county has me as a crew leader, that STS and community work service is the same thing because we really want them to be, we want to utilize this program. And sometimes people, I, I don't know if you, sometimes they don't go out, you mean, community work service, they can go wherever they want. But a lot of people in the community, if they don't, if they are, if someone goes and contacts the food shelf or the Threads of Hope and they'll say, they want to do ours, and they'll say, not if we don't hear from Mary Jean. It's kind of a safety thing for them too as well because they don't know John Doe coming in there. They want to know a little bit about the background. And also too, I don't want, my point is that they're going in to do, because people think community work service, we in our community have community work service and STS, are, we try to have that the same, that I don't want just to come back as a black eye if they do something very bad because they're doing community work service or STS. So we kind of want to make sure we keep that going. Does that make sense? Because I want to be, I'd like to be part of the equation so that, as a safety net for everybody and, and we get their hours done and we can utilize the program. Because sometimes they, they find their friends to sign that they do, I mean, I don't know if they do that or whatever. We want them to be accountable, that's all.
Are these numbers, including the drug court sentence to serve numbers, the community work service that the drug court candidates have to do?
That's only the people that I get.
Do, do you get the drug court participants?
Sometimes we get drug court people, yeah.
Because they're required to do a certain number of community work service in order to be able to graduate from drug court?
Yes, that's correct.
So are those numbers included in this data?
They are in this data, but I, yeah, yeah, they're in this data. But I don't get a lot of them, I mean, I don't get a lot of them recipients.
Yeah, the drug court ranks typically are pretty small, around that 14, 15 client range. And then there's a lot of other things that are happening, they're in treatment for quite a while and things of that nature that just doesn't make them available right away to do some of this STS or community work services required. But they eventually get there and have to do that, it's just they don't come in vast numbers all at once or anything like that.
And I think it should be noted to this board that the chamber judge Beckman is very interested in working to ensure that STS remains a program here. But in order to ensure the county is getting a good bang for their buck, you might want to recommend that we go back and, and actually look at, you know, like she recommended, if there's gonna be actual recommendations of STS when it comes for certain crimes and if the public defenders is on board with that kind of, you know, just standard recommendation for a certain crime and if that's gonna be actually enforced. Because this is, you know, STS has been looked at by this county board for how many years and we're still not having those concrete recommendations.
There's been times that it was, I, you know, I just loved it when Judge Beckman would say, you're gonna work community work service until you get a job. I mean, I wish, I would go back to that. So rarely do I get that, because then it almost, they get jo, they get job skills, they get structures. It promotes them and encourages them to get a job and fly and be a part of the community. You know, that's, but I haven't seen them that for a while, but that was a really creative, that's what I always tell her, thanks for your creative sentencing because, but I'd like to see more of that because if they're not working, they could do that as well.
So Brandy, what do you need from this board to address the issue that you very much, that you just described? I mean, what do you, I mean, I think that's what, that work group I'm sitting on too. Whatever we need to do with the, you know, to shore up some of the loose ends or connect some of the dots so we don't have these open gaps. I mean, so whatever you need from us.
I think it was kind of already identified that maybe at the pre-sentence investigation stage, it's one of those recommendations. And I think if the board directs that, they take a harder look at making, making those part of the recommendations and then ensuring that the judge, prosecutor and public defender or defense attorneys are on board with that as well. So it's an understanding that these are typically standard conditions.
Do you need just verbal indication from us today or do we need to make a motion or bring this forward to the next meeting? What do we need to do?
I just identified that for this board, that this has been a discussion and we're not there yet. And so I just want to put it in your hands on the direction you would like to give.
Well, I, I mean, I have no argument with, with, with that. I mean, I just don't know how to, the pre-trial sentencing and all that works. So that's your area of expertise.
Well, and I think we can have those conversations with Les as he supervises the agents upstairs and, you know, he'll obviously share about the meeting today and just refocus again. Sometimes it just falls off people's radar and I, I think any opportunity we have to, you know, have the courts order STS versus community work service, at least puts them in the program. And Mary Jean, if they are not able to do the work on the crew, will find independent sites for them, which then is almost like the community work service. But it still goes, all the numbers will go into your stats here versus, you know, if they go off on their own, we're not gonna know. And those stats won't be included in here.
When does the board need to make a decision on this item?
Contract is up next year. So we have, I think it's June, yeah? June 30th is the end of the next contract. So typically, I think last year we brought it forward for approval in April, May, somewhere in that range. So.
We've been working on them in January.
Yeah. So we'll have about six months until a decision really needs to be made on it.
And I will share, because I know this is probably a question that you're all wondering is, you know, what type of an increase are we gonna see in the next biannual contract? We have typically only passed along increases, the COLA increases for the employees and the health insurance increases. And I've been looking at the program and, and it's one of the things that is also grossly underfunded in community supervision. And so we are going to put forward a legislative request for funding to bring us kind of back up to where we need to be. The, I don't know if you know or not, but the, the county does not pay Mary Jean's actual salary. The contracts are based on an average of all the crew leaders' salaries. And so it's lower than what Mary Jean actually makes. And so we, the, the DOC ends up making up that difference on top of the 25 that we kick in. So it's, it's something that needs to be brought back up to speed. We need to redo the numbers and we don't want to pass those costs along to the counties. We want these programs to be viable. And that's, we're, we're gonna need the legislature's assistance with that though, or we won't have options. And frankly, I'd be scared of where the program would be if that has to be passed along to counties. So I understand the position you guys are in and just appreciate you taking the time to look at the numbers and working with us.
And one quick question. You'd mentioned earlier you have 26 crews statewide. Is that 26 counties that have STS or is that 26 state-run crews?
Those are state-run crews and there are a couple of counties that have more than one, but not very many.
Okay. Thank you.
So are you suggesting if the legislation doesn't put in, make you whole, that you will have to go to the county? Is that what you're implying?
Additional costs to the county. So any support you can give us in that arena would be wonderful.
Well, I think if the recommendations follow through, it has to. Otherwise, if, for STS, for me, for example, I like it in theory, but if Mary Jean or crew mem, a crew leader like her isn't in the county, I think it dies. Because I don't, you have to have a good crew member, a crew leader, otherwise it doesn't happen and I don't think they're utilizing it. So I think that recommendation has to happen through, like Brandy said. Otherwise, you know, if it's not a combination of that and someone like Mary Jean, it dies. You know, that's my theory.
We've got to talk to these judges. We've got to talk to these folks that are, you know, in the very beginnings of someone's getting in trouble, to give them these options.
Well, can I ask a question of this board? I mean, today, and this is just unofficial, but is there anybody opposed to provide direction that Brandy identified to help us shore up this program, my men?
What wording are you proposing?
Well, I don't have it yet, but I mean, in, in concept, you know what I mean? The concept of providing.
I think the message is clear that we need to meet and come back and show that we have actually moved forward with just the concerns, but actually implementing the new recommendations and having those be ordered by the court. If not, I don't know how your numbers are gonna keep increasing. So I think a meeting has to happen and there needs to be action after that meeting. I think that's the clear direction.
I agree with the communication.
And that falls kind of lockstep with what this community supervision work group is looking to do as well, so.
And I think you guys received information from, from Judge Beckman saying she was interested in having those discussions. So it's not like we'll be stonewalled when you get to the bench.
She was aware of it and she was supportive of it in that, in that email. That was good.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're seeing in the, in the work group too. It's, everybody is supportive of it, but it's fragmented in the, in connecting, getting all parties working together. And, and I think the challenges are those three different DOC, CCA and CPO counties, getting that message unified and then getting it to the legislature. And I know that work group, the, the plan is by, I think, session is February 23rd is our drop dead date to get something put together to bring to the legislature. So we've got meetings like every three weeks from now till February to, so, but.
Very good. There's your assignment.
Any other questions or do you have anything additional to add or? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your, I appreciate it.
Very good.
Greg Schultz, Land Use Director.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Records Director. This morning I've got five items on the agenda. First one is the Cleveland Hederikson Final Flat location, Final Flat, Grasbon Ridge. This year was July 22. This was, this cloud was formed from R1R2, so Palmary Platt was approved, now it's in the final flat stage. Planning on making three lots out of that one lot that you seem to have in there.
Well, this is one that we've, we've addressed this one.
Palmary Platt is wired for this.
And they all meet the required minimum square footage.
And they all meet the required minimum square footage.
Lot one is nine acres, lot two is three point nine one acres.
All right, do we wanna take, we'll take these individually or not?
Move to approve a final plat application for the three lot plot of Asplin, Asplin Ridge. Located in section twenty-two, township one nineteen, range twenty-nine, parcel oh seven, ten forty-seven, zero, zero, zero of Dassel Township.
Motion by Commissioner Bradison.
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further questions or discussion for Greg?
So Greg, in this one, uh, just to reiterate, there was one building eligibility. On the eighteen point five acres, and then we changed it to three because part, part, part of it is, uh, partially located in the shoreline. Was this ag land then before then? Was this a field or?
It was R, it was R one.
Gotcha.
It went to R two. The reason why I went from R one to R two, we had the option of having possible horses. You know, with R two, you have two animal units on lots. R one you can't.
Gotcha. But you, well, when you, when they do this, they're moving from one building entitlement to three though.
Yep, it's going from one lot, did you see that on the map? The large one divided into three, just see on the right-hand side on the picture, it's three lots.
And the justification for this particular one is because it is partially part of the shoreline district. The, the, part of the par- property is partially located within.
Is, because the justification, we wanna have three lots and the one, three buildings.
And what is the acreage limit if you want to have a horse, two horses? What, what is, what is the acreage?
Anything under ten acres, technically you have two animal units. Anything over ten acres, you have a feedlot, you can have up to.
Any other discussion? If not, I call the vote. All those in favor of the Asplin application, please say aye. All right, opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approval conditional use permit application for Shaw Landscaping Kingston Township.
That is the approval condition, use permit fifteen nine forty-two for Chantina Shaw, a property located seven four five three six. Two hundred and twentieth street, South Hamon, Minnesota, on Lake Francis. They are asking for landscaping projects down by the lake mostly, a new stairwell. They got approval for a variance last month for a landing that's eight by eight, which is thirty-two square feet, large in required ordinance. We're removing approximately about a hundred and ten cubic yards of material that brought in, moved in the shoreline, this project. And you can see from the pictures, it's very steep. That stairwell, did you see the picture on the right, it's been replaced.
Chair, uh, move to approve the application of per conditional use permit to move more than ten cubic yards of material. Within the shore impact zone and fifty cubic yards of material in the shoreline district of recreational development, Lake Francis with the conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Chief Abian.
I will second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item C, approved conditional use permit application for Keighley Landscaping Forest City Township.
The approval of conditional use permit fifteen nine fifty-seven, Kenneth and Don Keighley, property located twenty-eight seven four zero, six hundred and sixty-three. Litchfield, Minnesota, on Lake Richardson. They're asking for this one, they're asking to be, total cubic yardage removed about a size to the maximum one hundred and fifty cubic yards. Basically gonna be a terracing project. Two terraces from the lake inland. As well as a little bit of terracing underneath the existing deck. There's variance for this property, approved last month as well, for a new deck.
All right, look for a motion on the Keighley property.
I move to approve. Move to approve. Do I, a reader, approval of conditional use permit fifteen nine fifty-seven for Kenneth and Don Keighley property located. At two eight seven four zero, six hundred and sixtieth street, Litchfield, in the Lake Richardson Shoreline District Parcel oh nine oh four, twenty-one, zero, zero, zero.
Motion, Commissioner Bradison.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Chief Abian. Any further discussion or questions?
One thing that I was made aware of, and I visited with Greg earlier this morning, on the next one coming up. It says that a new septic was installed. Here on the one that we are going to currently vote on, it says that a new septic was installed in twenty twenty-one. I was not aware that every time an individual, even for a landscaping project. Their current septic system must be looked into, certified or.
Certified in the past three years, only if one was pulled.
Okay, yeah. I had not.
Landscaping projects, any building projects in the shoreline district.
So if you're going to get a permit to shingle your house?
No, not for maintenance, not for maintenance.
There is that difference.
Little difference there.
Do you need to clarify that's for shoreline district only, or?
Shoreline district only, yes.
But with the landscaping, then that septic thing is updated, and I was, I was pleased to hear that. Thank you.
With that, all in favor of the Keighley, Keighley Landscaping Project Forest City Township, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approved conditional use permit application for Ryder Landscaping, Ellsworth Township.
Approval conditional use permit fifteen nine fifty-eight, Romans Carson General Ryder, applicant Mike Driscoll. Property located twenty-eight seven four zero, six hundred and sixtieth street, which was on the shore of Lake Stella, Shoreline District. Parcel zero eight, zero six two, zero, zero, zero. This year is gonna be for a total of two hundred and eighty-six cubic yards of material in the shoreline district of Lake Stella. As you'll see, this is gonna be four retaining walls on existing property, but they're basically replacing those existing on the sites. You see in the next picture, you'll see how challenging it is, very steep. They're basically tearing out the old rear wheel tires, and they're replacing boulder walls. It's gonna be a rather large project, and after this is done, actually what they're gonna do is they're gonna take down the garage for the house that's existing there now. They redo this landscape, they do the point, and they're gonna rebuild the house next year, that's their plan. So we've got the two phases, start at this point, next spring, so that's what's gonna happen.
Any questions on the project?
Move to approve an application for a conditional use permit to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone. And fifty cubic yards of material in the shoreline district of the recreational development, Lake Stella, with the conditions.
Motion, Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bradison. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item E, support plan amendment of North Fork, North Fork Crow River Comprehensive Watershed, Watershed Management Plan.
What this is, is August third, Policy Committee, is North Fork Crow River Watership District Director. Wright County Civil Water Conservation District, as the plan coordinator for the projects. So I've got this, uh, we have this, and then resolution actually came through to. Basically states is to support any amendments that the planning, that the polit- policy committee, committee recommends. And future amendments to this point, this North Fork Crow River Watershed. So we're agreeing to agree with what the policy committee is gonna recommend. For this North Fork, Fork River Watershed District.
This is yours, isn't it Dan?
Yeah, basically it's just to speed things up and not have to keep going back to the board for every little item that they change. So as long as there's a policy member on the board, I think I'd be fine. Which I am.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, oh, no, that wasn't a motion, that was an explanation, but to segue into that. I move to support the policy committee's recommendation to proceed with a plan amendment to the North Fork Crow River Comprehensive Watership. Management Plan.
Motion, Commissioner Chief Abian.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bradison. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you Greg. Break time?
Yep.
It's up to you. Would you like to take a break?
I think we could take a five minute break. Oh, we got some little discussion items here.
Well, we have Fred too.
We've got a snack, we need a.
Official break, official break. Are we ready?
Ready whenever you are, sucker prick.
Okay.
It may, but I don't think so. I'd have to ask John Kopp.
Okay, I'll see if Marco's numbered.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Very good.
Two and three, you ready?
Sure.
We are.
All right, we're back in action here. Uh, Andrew Letson, County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Five, uh, so.
I deserve that.
Much rather be called Mr. Five than.
First item I have for you today is approval of construction management, uh, contract for the facility remodel project. Uh, as you know, we've been going through this, the design of the remodel project, our, uh, architects on the project are world architects in engineering. Uh, and then as we're now moving into this next phase of design, it was, it's beneficial for the county to engage with a construction manager at this point. The construction managers are gonna be able to provide a lot of different services throughout, not only the design process, but also during the construction phase. During the design phase, particularly they'll be able to assist the architects in, in evaluating the constructability of design. And evaluating alternatives in the event that we run into issues, but also, uh, providing valuable input on the cost estimates. You know, based on, you know, real world experience of what they're seeing out there. During the construction phase of the contract, the construction manager is gonna oversee the work, the constru- contractors are doing. They're gonna coordinate the contractors, ensure conformity with the plans, manage phasing to minimize disruption to our, our staff and our operations. And ensure that the project is completed at the best value possible. So as we, again, run into questions, concerns, issues, they'll be able to help us to identify alternatives and, and find that best value. In order to identify who we wanna use for construction manager, we went through a competitive process. Uh, we sent proposals to local, local firms, uh, and we received two proposals back. First was from Contiguity and the second was from I C S. Both firms, um, were interviewed by an interdepartmental committee, which, uh, included, uh, one of our commissioners, one of your colleagues. Uh, both firms interviewed very well, uh, however, the committee recommended that, uh, we move forward with Contiguity as our construction manager. And there were several reasons for that, um, you know, we won't get into great detail about it, but ultimately there was a high level of confidence that was felt. Uh, with, uh, Contiguity as we went through the interview process. Additionally, uh, their fees were lower than what I C S was recommending. And, and finally, as I did, the, the references, I got nothing but glowing responses from all the communities who I contacted, all of my colleagues out there. The, the fees for the project, uh, are, uh, included in the overall project budget, which you approved at a, at a previous meeting. Um, and are within that amount. The total estimated fee is five hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, included in that is a variable fee, which is charged on a monthly basis during the course of construction. So depending on how long construction goes, that number will either grow or it'll shrink. Uh, that amount is, um, twenty-eight thousand, uh, and change per month. There is a fixed base fee of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that's included in that total five hundred eighty-five thousand as well. So as we get to the point of construction, we'll have a better sense of knowing what our schedule is gonna look like and what that total fee is gonna come out to be. As of right now, we do have a little bit of wiggle room within the budget to absorb some additional time that would be necessary. Uh, so with that, I would recommend approval of, uh, proposal from Contiguity Group and available for any questions that you may have.
I see they had, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I see they had done a small project for Meeker County.
They did, yes. The, the probation remodel that occurred in twenty twenty, I believe, uh, up on Level Five, uh, they did the construction management for that. Um, Joel worked with them closely on that project and, and he had good experience with them.
I also saw that they did the Wright County forty-two million dollar project.
They did, and, uh, so I had a conversation with my counterpart in Wright County, and, uh, he was certainly one of the people who spoke very glowingly of, um, of Contiguity. You know, talking a lot about finding value in different things, um, that, you know. Where things wouldn't have to necessarily be, you know, reordered or finding, you know, materials, you know. Yeah, Commissioner Johnson, as you recall, when we went through and did the tour of that facility, we had a discussion about the, uh, the wall material. And, you know, they wanted a certain look, and they were able to, the construction manager was able to help them find a material that was of a lesser cost. But had a similar look and durability. So those were the types of things that they, um, they had talked about.
I believe, if I recall right, that, um, McLeod County, the John Claus Building, their new center, their new building down there that they remodeled. I think that was a Contiguity project.
Project as well.
Because I believe they were starting on that and that, some conversations, I think it was between Commissioner Olberg and Commissioner Kruger down there. That is why we chose Contiguity to try him on that probation project a few years, if I recall all them events properly, I think that's all that.
Yep, and it received positive comments about that project as well.
And we have seen the Wright County completed project, we've seen the Glen- well, I don't know if you have. Commissioner Chief Abian and I saw the Glencoe one, both were, I thought were very good quality.
Yeah, and Commissioner Kruger was real high on them too. He's pretty conservative in terms of the do- bottom line. And I had talked to him before we even did Walt, and he said, well, hopefully you get Contiguity as your, so I'm pretty confident now.
The variable fees, it says, uh, that was twenty-eight thousand a month is the estimate for that. Um, so this four hundred and five thousand could go down.
Yes.
If it's constructed more quickly.
Yes.
Or it could go up if there are situations that cause them to go beyond the eighteen-month construction period or. So that, when it says variable, that means?
Yes, so, so I, I misspoke, it's about twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, included in that is eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty for the onsite supervision, which is, you know, them being onsite. Others, thirty-two hundred dollars a month in travel and mileage costs, as well as, uh, a job site trailer. If we are able to find them spaced somewhere within our buildings where they don't need to have a construction management trailer, that they have a space that they can work out of. Then that cost wouldn't necessarily need to be incurred. So, yeah, it truly is, it's, it's the cost to have them here. They're not gonna charge us for time that they're not here, so if construction isn't occurring, then, then that is, if that had, the project hasn't actually started construction yet. Then they're not gonna charge us for that, and if it finishes early, they're not gonna charge us for additional time. But certainly, this is where phasing of the project is gonna come in and impact us. And where we're gonna have to have conversations with, you know, them and the architects and our staff to determine. How do we wanna phase the project to minimize disruption to our customers? Because we can do little bits here and there and have very little disruption, but it's gonna extend the time of the contract. Or we can do a lot, have a lot of disruption, it's gonna really shorten it. So there's a balance that we're gonna have to find there.
It just makes me nervous when it says variable, this is something that could get to be a bigger number. Or, I mean, does, I'm, I'm assuming weather can play into this and availability of materials and.
Yeah, and so part of the, um, the scheduling of how all of this works as well is that there's going to be a process where we go out to bids. And there are certain things that are gonna take longer to procure than others, and the idea is that you, you order those things right away. Even if they're, they come later in the project, so that you're not sitting around waiting for materials. So, um, you know, as we get into the design and get more of a, a sense of what that actual schedule is gonna look like. We'll have a better sense of what that cost is gonna be. We're still a little early in right now. We've estimated eighteen months. Um, what we were told during the interview process is that's doable, but it's a little aggressive. So it, it may come out to be a little bit more than that, but again, we will have several conversations about this with you. again, we will have several conversations about this with you prior to the point of going out to bid on this project.
So Wold had estimated this would cost six hundred and fifteen thousand then? Is that what?
Yeah, so, so the, the fixed fees, so if you recall, in the, the overall project budget, there's, I think, nine hundred and fifty thousand-ish dollars of fixed fees that were in there. A portion of that was Wold's design cost of seven hundred and forty-six thousand. And then the balance was intended to be for the fixed fees for the construction manager. So we are under that. The variable fees is baked into the construction cost, because they're basically acting as the general contractor on our bank.
Gotcha. So that fixed fee number actually is thirty thousand. They, they had two hundred and ten thousand. So the variable, gotcha.
Yep.
That's a little more relieving, I guess, I might.
I, I had the exact same question that you did when I pulled these numbers together, and it was a little bit of a, a shock to me, but, you know, in having conversations with them, you know, learning that this was, the variable fee was included in that construction, that per square foot construction cost, provide a lot more comfort.
Yeah.
All right.
Where are they located?
Little Falls.
Little Falls. There it says, Little Falls. Okay.
Anything else for Andrew?
Chair, I move to approve the proposed proposal from Contiguity Group of Little Falls, Minnesota, for the construction management services related to the facility remodel project via contract that is found acceptable by the county attorney.
Motion Commissioner Shifelbine.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Bradison. Any further discussions or questions for Andrew? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. N B, preliminary twenty twenty-three levy and budget.
Okay. So much of the information that you're going to see is what we've discussed with the work session today, but I'm going to run through it for the Poli Committee watching this. So where we are at right now, as far as our twenty twenty-three annual budget, comparing to twenty twenty-two, our total expenditures in twenty twenty-three are fifty-eight million eleven thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. Included in that is nine point one million dollars in transfers moving from one fund into another. So our net expenditures, the amount that we're going to spend is actually forty-eight point eight six nine million dollars. Total revenue is at sixty-two point four million. The same number is transferred into funds. And then we have about nine million dollars in estimated fund balance that we're going to use. So our net revenue, which is the, the taxes and fees and other revenues that we collect, is forty-four million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Looking at it on a fund-by-fund basis, what this chart shows is that in the general fund, we're anticipating using twenty point two million. The Road and Bridge Fund, eleven point two. Human Services, nine point eight. Parks, four hundred and forty-two thousand. Solid Waste, one point eight million. Regional Library, two hundred and sixty thousand. Public Health, one point five million. Family Services, seven hundred and fifteen thousand. Capital Projects, seven point seven eight million, and our debt service, four point two million dollars. That's how we get to our bottom line total expenditures. We do have a net positive balance on our revenues compared to our expenditures. And first off, that's largely driven by, in the capital projects fund, the issuance of a bond in twenty twenty-three to pay for the facility remodel project that we just discussed. And in our solid waste fund, the change in the way that we've operated the transfer station, rather than having the contractor receive all of the revenue and pay out all the expenses, now that is all being done by the county, is anticipated to have a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar net benefit to that fund. Looking at our operating versus our capital expenses, in twenty twenty-three, we're anticipating to have thirty-four million dollars in total operating expenditures, which is an increase of three point three million over the previous year. Capital expenditures, fourteen point nine million compared to six point five million, which is an increase of eight point four. So what you see is largely the increase in our budget is driven by this increase in capital expenditures, these one-time expenses. Largely, it's the facility project, but also it's highway construction that's occurring. In our use of fund balance, we anticipate using four point two million dollars out of the general revenue fund. Three point eight million of this is money that's coming from the general fund to go into the, the capital projects fund for the building remodel project, but also for other capital projects that are occurring in this year. Six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in the Human Services Fund. In our capital projects fund, we have three point two million dollars of American Rescue Plan dollars that will be used this year. This will be the balance of our ARP funding. Eight hundred thousand dollars for capital projects, which is for the, the roof of the courthouse and the law enforcement center. Twenty-six thousand dollars out of the Family Services Fund to pay for capital work there. Twenty-four thousand dollars out of Public Health and thirty thousand dollars out of the Regional Library, which is how we get to our eight point nine million dollar bottom line for fund balances. Transferring those funds, total of five million dollars from the general revenue fund into capital projects, parks and public health. The parks and public health is our annual appropriation from the general fund into those different funds. As you, as you recall, we always, rather than levying dollars directly into the parks and the public health funds, we levy those dollars into the general fund and then transfer them into those funds. We also have money from the, the Family Services Building Fund going into capital projects, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, which is for capital work at that building. And then, three point nine five million dollars from debt service to capital projects. That's that issuance of that bond. As we look at the property tax change for next year, bottom line here is that the preliminary levy that we're proposing is sixteen point two two million dollars at total change, percentage change of three percent. As we look to move forward from here, our next steps are on December first, at six P M., we're going to have our truth and taxation meeting. And then we're going to potentially look to adopt the budget on December eighth. With that, I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Andrew?
When is the, I thought the Human Services were going to put a million into that? Is that all coming in twenty twenty-four? Or how does that work? Are there?
Yeah.
Fund balance?
Yeah.
Because they didn't show that for twenty twenty-three.
Correct, yes.
Okay, is there a reason behind that, why it's delayed to twenty twenty-four? Or is it something with the counting numbers or why?
I think ultimately, it's something that we could do in twenty twenty-three. As we were going through, as I was going through this with, with Paul, you know, we had, you know, not identified that in this year, but we certainly could.
Gotcha. I just didn't know if there's something where you could get more reimbursement that way.
Yeah.
If that wasn't the case. It was just, doesn't, doesn't affect the levy.
No.
At all, but it's just general information.
Any other questions on budget levy for Andrew? You got the look on your face, Julie.
Yeah, I make, I make little notes, and usually if I just sit tight, they're, all those questions get answered if I just, if I just pay attention.
We're about done sitting for today, so if you got one, you better bring it forward though.
I think I'm fine. I read through Andrew's budget adjustment letter. I had a few questions on that, but I think I'm good.
Okay. With that, I look for a motion.
So move to set the preliminary twenty twenty-three net levy at sixteen, two hundred and twenty, three hundred and ten dollars, which represents a three percent increase over twenty twenty-two.
Motion Commissioner Bradison.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Shifelbine. Any further discussion or questions?
I, I know this is beating a dead horse, but it seems like we're, we're tapping into our reserves. This is not a firm percentage at this time. We've got four months to go. Last year, we set our preliminary lever, levy higher and then shot for the lower one. This year, we're giving ourselves no wiggle room, except to go back into our reserves if something comes back. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of balls in here right now. I don't know if I will support this motion.
All right.
How, how would you, what, what, what would you recommend changing, Paul?
I just would have given ourselves a cushion on that levy. I still would like to see three percent, but we have till December to bring it to that. Right now, we're saying, oh, we're, we're stuck at three. This is where it's going to be. We can't go up. That's, that's my only concern. Last year, I believe, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, two five was our original, and we settled at one five.
I believe so.
We gave ourselves a, a percentage cushion last year. This year, we're giving ourselves no cushion to go to December with, with several items that we're still working on. That's my only concern. I like, I like to have some room, okay? If the sky doesn't fall in, we're great. We're perfect. We go three in, in December and it's over. That's just my only concern.
Well, just keep in mind, that's the ceiling. It's the ceiling.
This is the ceiling, right here. It's the ceiling.
And I, and I, actually, I will say, as we were working through the budget process, that was a, a question in my mind too at one point where to come in at, but after discussions with our, all the gentlemen that came in and talked bonds with us.
Chuck?
Chuck. After his conversations and the percentages and things like that, I'm, I'm comfortable with the three percent.
I will be, I will be comfortable with three percent in December if we don't have any changes between now and then. I'll be very comfortable with it. I don't want to increase taxes one dime more than we have to. But by the same token, I just don't like always going to our reserves.
All right. Anything else? With that, I'll call the vote. And this is not a resolution, correct? I'll call the vote. All in favor of setting the twenty twenty-three net levy at sixteen million two hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and ten dollars, which represents a three percent increase over twenty twenty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Administrators.
Just as a reminder, we have a work session next Tuesday.
What, what, can I, what's on?
We're going to have three items to discuss on next week's work session. We're going to have a discussion about the, the sheriff's budget request. We're going to have a discussion about the five-year highway plan. And as part of our website redesign that we're engaging in right now, it's an opportunity for us to take a look at our logo and decide, do we want to continue on with what we have or do we want to do something different? So we're going to have a couple of options for you to take a look at and get your feedback and see if we want to continue on that process.
Committee reports. Start on my right.
All the way down here? Then it's been quiet. We had the Health Insurance Committee, which reviewed the dental. We've already acted on that, so there's no point in bringing forth anything there. I had a PAC meeting in Wilmer on the fourteenth. Our executive director, Rochelle Peterson, is resigning. She's opening her own business. She's been there a number of years. She's been great. She's been a, a really good executive director. But I'm one of these folks who thinks that change is just a good thing. Now we'll take a look and maybe we'll shake it up a little bit and head a little bit different direction and have a little different leadership. So that was good. A M C and Alex, well, that's always, always fun. Tax capacity presentation by the gentleman from Aiken was very interesting. And I see that Andrew sent out the email showing how we came in next to the other ones in, in property values, which continues to be a, a big discussion and, and learned from him that people, it, we need to break that down. I need to be able to break that down in my head so I can explain it better when somebody asks me about it. I was on transportation and infrastructure, and I'm going to take this opportunity to once again thank Meeker Cooperative for vibrant. Because that took up one half day talking about broadband in the state of Minnesota, and here we sit in Meeker County, and we are so well taken care of. The second half of that discussion was about finding ways and platform to have permanent financing to our highways rather than this wait-and-see that we tend to play each year. So, but that was it. Great food. Big meatballs.
Julie.
It's you.
Okay. Of course, starting out the month, back on the sixth, we had a regular meeting. Then that same week, on the eighth, I traveled to Hutchinson. Beth was with me. We did the Meeker-McLeod-Sibley Public Health Meeting. It was on the eighth. We had a very nice presentation about the SHIP program, which is an acronym for State Health Improvement Partnership. We have a lady here who represents Meeker County. Her name is Pam Bagley. She did a really nice job making her presentation about all of the projects that she's involved with, with the SHIP program. It was well done.
You're putting a lot of emphasis on that P.
Let's be thankful she is.
I'm not criticizing.
She did a very good job. This committee is conducting employee reviews. We were updated on the grant awards and things, things were in, in order. Andrew had been sent an email about surplus furniture information. And there's some pictures of all the surplus furniture. A year or so ago, I don't know if it was Sibley County, which everyone purchased all kinds of new equipment, or chairs and tables and desks and et cetera, and then they never used them. So they're sitting in our warehouse here. And those pieces of furniture need to be dispersed. And I know Brian just left, but he had put in a request of, what, nine thousand some dollars for furniture for the sheriff's department. And I'm hoping that between you fellows, that maybe some of that can be taken a look at if it could meet some of their needs.
So, so I, I put in a note saying that we would be interested in all of it, because with our facility remodel project, I don't know what all of that stuff is going to look like, but we would be able to find use for it. I'm a hundred percent certain. I have not received a response on that.
Oh, okay. Very good.
But I know all three counties expressed interest.
Yep. They were going to be taking a look at that. Okay, thank you. I wanted to touch base on that. Let's see, today is the twentieth. Tomorrow, Wednesday, I have the local public health meeting. That'll be over here at our social services, and hopefully we will get to meet our new doctor. Dr. Whitney, I don't know if it's Rents, is how you pronounce her name. She will also then become our local public health board chair. She'll be taking Dr. Searle's place because of his retirement. So that's tomorrow morning. Then on the twenty-seventh, we'll have our work session. Andrew expressed the three topics there. Then on the twenty-seventh that afternoon, we have a U of M, University of Minnesota, extension meeting out at the fairgrounds. And the crop naturalist person who had been here working, he has taken another career path. So we will begin working through another hiring process to replace that crop naturalist person. And then also on the twenty-seventh, Barb mentioned, we have our five o'clock Dassel Ditch meeting, and that will round out the month.
Just remember, it's not at the History Center. It's at the.
At the, on the other side of town. City Hall meeting. That's it for me.
Number four?
Oh. Number four, like I said, it's a lot better than number two. Well, you know, you have to think about it. So I had an E D A meeting with Steve, and then we agreed to, what is that, where we, what exact thing that's called really?
You're talking about the?
The housing and in terms of what kind of housing Meeker County needs.
Housing study.
The housing study.
That's where.
We voted to approve a housing study for Meeker County.
It costs thirty-four thousand dollars, and then it's prorated. The county pays half. And then each community that participates pays based on per capita, and they only had, I think, And they only had, I think Grove City, Cosmos and Darwin that they hadn't heard back from, but they're, they're very small dollar amounts.
Will Litchfield be?
Yes.
They will be participating, okay?
And it's um, they've done it like five years ago.
Twenty sixteen, I think, wasn't it?
And actually Joe Keakley, who's a developer that sits on ADA from Watkins, um, they spoke to it probably more than, well, definitely spoke to it more than anybody else, but uh he said they do use a lot of that data when they come into a community. He said there's a lot of uh information in them housing studies that provides the builders with, help cut some corners on their expenses coming in if they already have that data, so it is helpful, so. So we did vote for that and uh to participate in, in that study.
That was adjusted. That's what I thought the biggest thing of E D A was. And then uh, then I had to speak at Kingston Lions. They asked me to come there, so. That's it.
And how did that speech go?
Yeah, my topic was all over the board, if you can imagine that, so, no.
About the board?
No, oh no, it was all positive.
Just about number two.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna elaborate on number two.
Picking up number two.
But uh, no, it's about thirty minutes, so just talking about what the county's doing as far as things and I talked about the remodeling and trying to set a levy and stuff and what we did last year and our, our, what our struggles are of trying to fill positions in the sheriff's office and but on the positive side that we're trying to put more uh individuals on the uh public works in terms of you know, snowplows and stuff like that, which is always a cons- the biggest two concerns for everybody is, or three. How much is it gonna cost me? How are my roads are gonna be? And is it gonna be safe in the county? I mean, so I kinda hit those three subjects and, and talked about the remodeling and why we, why it's been a long thing coming that they've been talking about it ten years and everybody seemed pretty receptive about it, so.
It's just Kingston Lions?
Yeah, there's about twenty people. I think Randy spoke there before. One person asked how it is working with your sister, being that she's above you, and I was like, well, I don't know about that hierarchy regardless. I'm her uncle. Family hierarchy goes above county hierarchy. They all agreed with that and then that was
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned, exactly. So, no, it was good. It's good to actually, actually talk to people and actually they had questions and stuff and it's a nice little forum, but that's it.
On that note, if I could ma- mention, Barb was, was here earlier. Last week, Barb was the presenter for um, it's called Welka. It's the Women's Organization of the Church that I belong to here in town. There were about twenty ladies that attend that and Barb was our primary presenter and she gave information to all of us on elections. All the struggles that have happened in the last couple of years, how they're moving forward. She explained the differences between you know, early voting and ballots and mail-in and everything and she had a really informative, well-done presentation and I was going to go down now after the meeting and thank her for that, but I thought I'd mention it here as well. She did an excellent job, represented us well.
You said you were gonna go down there?
Yeah.
But you're not going to anymore?
Oh, I think I will. She, she has candy in her office. But yeah, kudos, kudos to Barb.
I was just gonna mention one thing on, you mentioned snowplowing and stuff too, and I thought Phil brought up a good point in that discussion we had a week or two ago that public, the public perception or the public uh demands of service have changed so much over the years, you know, when it comes to snowplowing. So I, I do think that they are receptive to us adding positions or full-time operators and keeping people in the seat.
Yeah, they get it too, that it's harder to have part-timers versus full-timers, not knowing the operation of the equipment itself.
Um, for myself, uh we already touched on E D A. I also had a Central Minnesota Jobs and Training. Um, some of the things we talked about there, uh on average, there are fourteen facilities, service about sixty-nine thousand people a year on average. Um, in oh eight, that, that jumped to two hundred and forty-seven thousand people per year. Um, and it hasn't really dipped much below to sixty-nine thousand. There was kinda that sixty-nine, seventy thousand prior to oh eight. And then it jumped way up and then it dipped back down, but it's still in that range of about seventy thousand, but they are starting to see that climbing. They are getting more people in uh recently. Uh, another note there, they did their Cambridge office was broken into and they stole a bunch of computers, printers, drilled into the safe. And then they must've had A D D or something because they got sidetracked by something that was shiny in the window in the business next to them, so they went into there and anyway, short, long story short, they were able to track the trail of junk that they carried out of there across to a housing development and tracked them down. It was kind of a entertaining note. Then uh I talked already a lot with the presentation today on, on D, from DOC on what we talked about in public safety up at AMC and Arrowood last week. Um, just, there's a lot of struggles in public safety and um that's gonna be a, a continuing conversation on how to tie the loose ends up there and and get funding where it needs to be and, and get the, the segments of the organizations from the judges to the, to the probations uh supporting one another. Uh, then I had Grove City Care, um and everything seems to be operating relatively smoothly over there. Or that, I'm sorry, that's coming up. That's coming up next Monday, so I'll have Grove City Care and then a work session, so. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot.
I was looking at um some of our information and now coming up on October twenty-fifth, the Association of Minnesota Counties is going to be meeting here in Litchfield in our courthouse. What will the board Yep, what, what will the responsibilities be?
Twenty-fourth.
Banana bread.
Correct, Andrew? This is twenty-fourth.
Fourth is a Monday. So what did I write down? Twenty, I got it on my calendar, but I got the wrong date here. Thank you. Yeah, it'll be Monday for twenty-fourth. Are there any responsibilities on our part that we need to be aware of?
Banana bread.
Oh, I can do that.
A lot of it.
Just, just to attend.
And it's casual dress.
Yeah, there's no other responsibility to be there and
Forty people probably-ish.
Depends.
Yeah, but I mean roughly.
If harvest is really moved, then it'll be a little less.
We don't have to prepare any speeches or anything or uh
Well, you could. Typically, what they do is they ask for an update on things that are going on in the county. They'll reach out in advance and kind of let you know or let me know and you know what kind of the topics they're looking for, you know, feedback on and then we'll help, I can help prepare some comments and typically what's happened in the past is that I've been forced to go up there, give those comments. Come along with me, choose not to.
I did one here, but before you.
He wasn't here.
I know.
He didn't go to that one.
Um, I did have, I did have one other thing too I forgot to mention. Uh, Minnesota Rural Counties. Um, the executive director, Dan Larson, has announced he is resigning. Um, not retiring, but resigning. He's heading on a little bit di- different avenue, something that he's worked on in the past. So he will be resigning effective the end of the year. Um, and so they're appointed a kind of a, a search committee, if you will, to look for a, a new executive director. But I have a feeling that I, I'd have more than a feeling that uh I would requi- kinda make a request that Meeker exit that program at the end of the year. I had asked for a year um last uh December, I believe. And uh I think we're gonna move on. AMC has other avenues, I think, that are more viable for us. And save those twenty-five hundred dollars in the expenses a year, so. But.
When will that decision have to be made? Now December?
Uh, I think we pay it in like Febu-
Yeah, February.
First part of the year, so. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Jerry Olberg, for a wonderful meeting.